To order this evening, we have with us Councillors Clark, Councillor Caddy, myself, Michael Kuschmerich, Councillors Donnelly, Dina Tally, Tran, Bean and Boishman. The agenda will consist of the following this evening. One order, 14817, that the mayor has authorized to accept by gift or grant the real property located at 700 Main Street, Fitchburg, Mass. With that said, I'm going to turn this over to the mayor to present this order and give more information. Mayor Dina Tally.
Thank you, Council President. And, Councillors, this, I believe, is just an outstanding opportunity for the city to provide a campus setting for what we are planning on rehabilitating Old City Hall on Main Street. Just to give you some perspective on the history of this, about, I don't know, two or three months ago, when we learned that the bank was closing, my office, myself actually, I reached out to the Bank of America folks, their upper-level management people in Worcester. We spoke about what possibilities may exist for that building. We arranged a meeting, I should say, Mary Jo Bohart, Economic Development Director, reached out to the bank personnel. We arranged for a meeting, they met in my office, this was approximately two months ago, and we provided them with what we were hoping we could move forward with, and given our limited resources, it was made clear to them that gifting of the property is what we were really seeking. They took this information back to their board and their upper-level management as well, and we dealt with Edwin Shea, Market President for Business Banking, and Brian Gripp, Senior Vice President for State Government Relations Executive. They came back probably about three weeks afterwards to say that they were more than willing to gift the building to the city of Fitchburg. So, we were very, very pleased about that. And they're delighted to have the opportunity to donate the building to the city, and they have stated, and to the people of the city of Fitchburg. I'm reading this from them. "This meaningful investment in Fitchburg's future, as a vibrant regional hub underscores our commitment to supporting the revitalization of its innovative gateway city. We are honored to continue to serve customers and clients in the region through their business ventures in Lemur, the Gardner and Fitchburg, of course. In addition to this property donation, Bank of America is privileged to partner with several local community organizations, including the Fitchburg Art Museum, United Way of North Central Massachusetts, and New View Communities Reimagining Main Project, promoting health and well-being of residents from Fitchburg and the surrounding region." So, that's the position that they've taken. We believe that it's critical to moving forward with the feasibility study that's ongoing by Lamarrone Pagano. Each one of their proposals has included the Bank of America as part of how they can make the best use of the property in general. So, without further comment, I'm requesting that any comments from the council be taken at this time.
Councillor Bean.
The direction the city will be taking for City Hall property would be the old City Hall, the property's next which, so the thoughts of taking other properties in the city are that's off the table now? This is really the direction the city's going in?
It is. This is the most viable. This makes the most sense and the most achievable.
Do we have an overall cost of, approximate cost?
You know, councillor, I'm reluctant to throw out numbers because we're very, very early in the process. Lamarrone Pagano will be coming back to us probably by the end of August, perhaps early September, with much more firm numbers as to what it would cost. I can say that the building committee, which met two weeks ago, I believe, there were five options, and all in ascending order of cost. We went with the first option for a number of reasons, not just cost, but the breakdown of the building and what would happen with, given the fact that we've got the theater block across the street, we've got the senior center, we felt, or the committee felt, that that was the best option to pursue. And again, that number, that option works into what our bonding capacity is. So, that's where we're at now.
I look forward to hearing, seeing that consultant report because I think it might be a good idea or so.
Yeah, thank you, councillor.
Councillor Donnelly.
Just to back up what the mayor said, in the five options, each option included the bank.
That's right.
So, anyway, whether it's retaining the old City Hall or knocking it down, everything included the bank.
All five options, that's right.
Councillor Boishman.
Mayor, is there a Plan B? If Plan A doesn't work, don't get me wrong, I'm going to vote for the bank, but the other stuff, if that doesn't work, then you don't get enough votes from this council on revitalizing 718.
Yeah.
What's going to be Plan B plan with that building?
With the old City Hall?
Yeah.
You know, councillor, I think that was part of the plan when we had some other things in the works, would be to secure the building, possibly even use some resources to mitigate some of what may be contained in those buildings, what we're not sure, there may not be much at all, and hopefully work toward marketing the building. It's just, that's always been an uphill battle because of the condition of the building and the requirements to bring it up to 21st century standards would be cost prohibitive. So, I think it would be difficult for us to do anything other than what we're driving in that direction, which is the City Hall.
Okay.
Yeah.
One other question. Main Street, if we keep the focus on Main Street like you want, are you going to change the one lane into two lane from Putnam Street up?
I think that's an argument for a different night, is it not, councillor?
Well, I mean, it's all, I just want to know how.
Councillor Boishman, unfortunately, this does not pertain to the order before us, the layout of the street.
How do you figure it doesn't, councillor?
Councillor, this is about accepting a piece of real estate and city, as it pertains to the city. So, I'd ask that you just keep to the topic of whether or not to accept this property and plans, future plans for that property itself.
Okay, thank you, councillor.
You're welcome.
Councillor Dina Tally.
I have to assume that, prior to seeing the preliminary figures or the final figures from the studies, that this avenue that we're about to take possibly is a lot less expensive in the overall grand scheme of this entire capital effort we're about to take on than if we weren't to take this building and reconstruct or renovate the existing 718 structure. And why do I say that? Because for years, there have been numbers thrown out at us about 25 million, 30 million. And when I saw that this opportunity arose, my first thought was, if this building is going to supplement 718, whatever we do with that, we would probably therefore be allowed in 2020 or 2019, we take out a bond, to renovate 718 or redo 718 at far less cost because we won't need as much space there as we would if we didn't have the Bank of America building. I've had some constituents ask me about specifics, and my reply back to them is, all of the specifics are going to come out in these final studies we're going to get at the end of the summer, early fall, of which we were just told this bank building is in every option that's being entertained. But that's how I look at this from an overall capital improvement cost, is by taking this building on at no cost, capital cost, the cost for the city of Fitchburg and its taxpayers for the redo of 718 would be far less expensive because now we don't need the same type of structure and accommodations that we would need if we didn't have this building. So, this building will have offices in there, it'll lessen the need for more space in the old structure, and possibly allow us to do more things in the old structure that we would not have been able to do if we don't have this option. So, I see this from a common sense approach as being less costly in the end because we're getting, how much, how many, how much square feet is this again, I'm sorry?
The building is 3,200 square feet.
So, we're getting 3,200 square feet for no cost, aside from the maintenance costs and, you know, the general upkeep of it for electricity and heat, which I assume is substantially minimal until we move on this in four or five years? Do we happen to know what that might cost? I mean, did we have anybody go into this building and see how it is from a structural standpoint, how it was taken care of? There's no surprises is what I'm asking.
Yeah. No, we've had, the Lamarrone Pagano Architectural Firm has been in the building many times. And the solicitor has some information relative to some of the other background studies that were done, completed. Ben?
Yep, we've received environmental and reports regarding not only the environmental on the property, but also the condition of the building materials used in the building. We've had that reviewed by Lamarrone Pagano. They're satisfied with those reports. We've taken an extra step and had that independently reviewed by someone in the business, companies Economic and Birotechs that do asbestos, lead and those types of abatements. They found nothing unusual with the building, they've been in the building. We still have time to continue to inspect the building, should the council approve an order, having the mayor sign the agreement, and we'll continue to look at the building. But for the building, as it was constructed, there is nothing in that building that would suggest to us that it's a problem, and we've done some work on that.
Do we, can we say with any certainty tonight that, once we take this building over and we have to put minimal cost into it, that we have the capital layaway in our current budget to heat and provide that building with the basic electricity needs for the next year at least, or four years, if you will, until 2020?
As the building functioned, the functional, operational, with a staff, a bank personnel in there, it's $1,400 a month for the electrical bill for that building.
Councillor, we also have our city auditor here tonight.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, my question, gentlemen, is very simple, is, you know, obviously, there's no upfront capital cost for acquisition or repair or renovation, but we're going to have to keep it in some kind of working condition until we actually move into that facility, which won't be for another three years probably. So, I'm just asking a very simple question about any estimation on what the operational cost is for that vacant structure when we, once we take it over? And if, whatever that cost is, is that consumable in the existing budget we just passed? Or is there going to be an order or not an order?
At this point, I don't anticipate that there would be a separate money order for the operations for the first year. The cost, I mean, there could be costs of, I'm just throwing out numbers, $10,000 to $20,000 for the year, just for minimal costs. There could be enough room in the City Hall maintenance accounts to cover that. If not, by the time we get to the end of the fiscal year, we should be able to pull money from other sections of the budget to cover that.
Okay, because I like to take the whole picture in this matter. Because I've had some residents speak to me and ask, well, we're losing tax revenue. How much is the tax revenue?
$11,000.
$11,000. So, they're saying you're going to lose $11,000, add 15 or 20, just a few people, not many. So, technically, the city's net hit for the next three years annually is $30,000, let's say. What I would like to see in the studies we're going to get from Lamarrone Pagano, or, as a side note, is what I talked about in my very first statement. What are the savings this city is going to realize by taking this building at no cost as opposed to not taking it and redoing 718 Main Street with far more square footage and far more capacity we'll need as opposed to taking this building over? Because if we take this building over, we won't need as much capacity or space in the old structure, which should save us a considerable amount of money. And in the grand scheme of things, that's how I like to present this to the resident, the taxpayer, to say, yes, we are losing $30,000 temporarily over three years, each of three years, but in 2019, 2020, when we take out that bond, instead of a $25 million bond or a $20 million bond, it's only going to be a $15 or $16 million bond, which is right off the top, $4 or $5 million in savings, not to mention the interest that you accrue over that period of the payback. So, that's, from a financial standpoint, this makes perfect sense to me. My only concern was the condition of the facility, and considering that Bank of America is a major corporation that, you know, obviously, their facilities have to be prime condition, they have customers going in there every day, I'm confident in what was just stated to us by the city attorney about the architectural firms already taking a look at it. So, I only see savings in the end with this option. It's a nice little campus option, and I ask myself, what's the alternative? The alternative is, Bank of America lets that building rot, it's another vacant property on Main Street. You know, we have to also think about how this affects the general area of Main Street. We've got FSU investing a lot of taxpayer money into that theater block. Once that's entirely renovated, and this Bank of America building and the new City Hall is constructed, Upper Main Street's going to look a lot nicer than it ever has in the last 30 or 40 years. So, I also consider that factor, that piece of it too, is how does this affect the theater block and being a willing partner with the college in generating commercial activity in that area? Because you don't want a vacant property across from the theater block or two vacant properties. So, I see this from a financial standpoint as a win, and I don't even concern myself with the lost tax revenue, considering the savings we're going to realize by taking this building on at no cost as opposed to not taking it on and having to build a far larger and more accommodating facility. So, that's how I see this, and I will support this tonight. And I think that it makes perfect sense, and I understand that we won't get the studies for a little while, but, you know, as has been stated, this is already in all of the options and studies. And, you know, the city council, for years, this is what kind of surprised me during the feasibility study debate, for years, as far as I can remember, when the previous mayor decided to remove us from the old structure. I mean, this is my opinion, it was always understood from where I sat that we were never going to stay at the FRA building. We always had intentions to come back in some shape or form to downtown. So, that area needs a revitalization, and in three short years, it's going to happen. So, this adding to that makes it far more appealing, in my opinion. And at no cost, how can you beat that? And again, we have to make sure in the study that we identify what the savings would have been, what the savings are between not doing this as opposed to just renovating 718 and leaving the Bank of America building to rot. What more of a bond would we have had to take out to make that space accommodating? That's the key question in the next few months after this goes forward, if it does. Thank you.
Mayor Dina Tally.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councillor, I have a statement from Lamarrone Pagano that speaks exactly to what you've just mentioned. First, "The full program does not fit into the City Hall building. The city would have to make compromises to the space needs across several departments to fit those in one building, or go with a larger renovation, or addition, or new construction altogether. Second, without the bank building in its site, there is not much site left for improvements. The site would essentially remain the same as it is today, with little to no opportunity for the development of a plaza or other public amenities to encourage additional activities for the area. If there are the goals of revitalizing the downtown area, encouraging pedestrian traffic and other public and business activities, not taking the bank and utilizing this site would seem like a huge missed opportunity." That's from Lamarrone Pagano. So, this speaks, I think, very, very well to what you're asking about. This is clearly where we, what we should be doing, incorporating that into a campus, city, government facility. Thank you.
Also, President, this evening, we have Councillor Green joining us. Councillor Caddy.
So, I can't, it doesn't make sense to me, is there immediate use for this building? For instance, we have employees.
In the basement of the library.
Not anymore.
But it seems to me that you, it seems that we're so cramped that it makes sense to move someone over there and keep that building occupied for the next two or three years.
Can you hear that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Councillor, we could very easily do that. And I can't say we will or we won't, but that's something that will be available to us if we have to. And I agree, we're getting a little squeezed where we are. So, that might be, you know, a viable option that we can look at.
Thank you. Councillor Tran.
Thank you, Mr. President. Do we know what the bank's plan would be if the city doesn't assume the building?
I would imagine they're going to list it, market it, try to sell it, I suppose.
And I know you mentioned that the bank is part of the plan to rehabilitate City Hall, but in the same token, you're saying that the feasibility is, the feasibility study is ongoing. How far along is the feasibility study, and do you have a timeline to when the city council will receive that study?
It could be as early as August, councillor. We may have to call you in for a special meeting. Lamarrone Pagano has assured me they can provide a solid plan by the end of August.
Because I'm asking that, Mayor, is, it's difficult to speak to the benefit or the lack of benefit of assuming this building if we don't have a plan on what we're going to be doing with the City Hall? All I'm hearing are assumptions on what we'll be doing with City Hall.
Well, councillor, we were given a preliminary back on June 2nd. As a matter of fact, councillor Donnelly is a member of that committee, along with President Kuschmerich. We were given five options. And again, very preliminary, but ranges as to what the cost would be for each option. And again, I'm reluctant to talk about numbers because I think that's in flux, those figures are in flux. But the five different options we had were pretty detailed. I mean, certainly by August, they'll be even much more refined. But they gave us a very, very good picture of what each option would cost and what it would entail. You know, incorporating the old building, it goes from remaining in the old building and gutting the inside to a brand-new building in option five. Now, again, as I mentioned, the cost escalates at each option. So, the committee voted and agreed upon option one, and as I mentioned, for several reasons, one of them being that it fit more of what we believe we should be doing in that area, given all of the other activities that are in the works as well. As I mentioned, Fitchburg State, we've got a large function hall at the senior center. Those are some of the things that we'll get, we'll be more clear on in August. There'll be much more opportunity to talk about specifics as to why we move toward option one. And again, the cost is also, you know, fits our needs.
Well, Mayor, you represent the city, and if you feel this building is a puzzle to us moving forward with rehabilitating the City Hall and bringing everybody under one roof, then I would completely support this order. My concern is that, and I think this concern was raised by councillor Dina Tally as well, is that we'll be losing between $33,000 to $44,000 in tax revenue within the three- or four-year timeframe. Now, when we assume this building, I completely concur with councillor Caddy over there that we should put it to good use and move some of our departments that are currently located all over around the city that are cramped into that building and put that building to good use, Mayor.
I have to caution you also, councillors, that the, part of the feasibility study is a build-out of that building that would be included in the overall cost of Old City Hall and the bank. So, it's not, I mean, you could probably make do with the way it is now, but part of the, part of the process is going to be to upgrade the inside of that building as well, to suit city departments.
You can't do that build-out in that building until we begin the work for the City Hall, right?
Yeah.
So, we don't know what the timeframe will be until we start doing that work for City Hall. And by leaving that building empty for two or three, four years without collecting tax revenue, I don't think that's going to be something that would benefit the city. Thank you.
Councillor Boishman.
Mayor, if we take this building, don't get me wrong, now, I'm not saying I'm against it here. But if we take this building, are we going to heat it or are we going to shut everything off, that building, like we did with the old?
No, I'm not an expert in that department, councillor, but I will go on the recommendation of the Building Department and the Building Commissioner. I don't know if we can simply shut it down. If we can, fine, but I think I would probably rather keep it heated at a low level and during the winter months.
The only reason why I asked you that is because I was always told, and I think councillor Donnelly can back this, that once you shut a building down and the cold gets in, it starts cracking the walls and everything else.
That's right, yeah, yeah. But again, a lot of that, I'm going to rely on the architectural firm as well, and the experts to guide me as to whether or not we should shut it down or keep it, you know, keep the power on in there. It's still going to be maintained on our insurance rolls, will be insured by the city. So, and it will be alarmed, so.
Now, let me ask you a question, since we've got the quiet deed in front of us. Would us take, if we take over this building, and I say, yes, are they still going to use the ATM machine? Are they still going to be functional to use the ATM according to this?
Yeah. So, no, the ATM will be, won't be part?
Won't be in use. However, for the next 10 years, they are reserving the right to decide to work in conjunction with the city to place an ATM someplace on the property. So, it's going to be placed by agreement, but it's not going to be placed in the mayor's office, for example, or inside the building or outside the building, any specific place. But we're going to find a place to put the ATM, and they obviously want some visibility on Main Street, so that will be certainly something we're going to take a look at.
Okay, so, I just want to make sure it's not going to be inside that building, right? Like they have it right now?
Well, it's going to be at a place that whoever is working with them in the future will make an agreement with them to place it. Once they do make an agreement to place it, they will have the right to maintain an ATM there for 20 years, from the date of the closing, not from the date of placement. So, there is a relatively short timeframe we'll come to in that.
You know, I hear so much about what we're expecting. Let me get something right, I'm not against progress, but as an investor, as an investor, you take an awful chance as an investor. You're hoping that different things fall into place. Just because the university bought across the street doesn't make us obligated to buy across the street and start fixing up because they bought it. They took a chance, just like I take a chance, just like councillor Donnelly takes a chance, and anybody that plays the stock market takes a chance. You're hoping to do good, but there's that possibility that you won't do good. So, when I hear people talk and say, well, they're investing quite a bit of money, well, they're taking a chance, just like I take a chance. So, I don't want to base my theory because the upper calming up here on the right-hand side is investing a lot of money. They're taking a chance, just like I take a chance. So, I don't want my decision or your decisions based on that. I want to do what's good for the city of Fitchburg. And I know what my constituents tell me, they don't want to invest money in an old building, in an old building, they don't want to do it. And I don't blame them. They don't want that thing. That's what they tell me, and believe me, they tell me. So, that's how I'm just letting you know. I'm not against this, and I'll repeat it, I'm not against this because it's for free. I'll be a fool to turn my back and say, don't take it, because I think it's a good idea. They're giving me something for free, I'll take anything for free. But, you know, I don't want, when I hear councillors talk and say, well, they're investing a lot of money over here, well, you know what? It's a chance you're taking. It's like anything else, it's a chance. And that's how I feel. Thank you.
Well, I think there's a high potential for return on investment in this property itself, particularly if we move forward with a campus-like feel of a City Hall, and we'll have an opportunity to vote on that later. I think what hasn't really been emphasized here is that, even if it weren't to go through, and we just have this building, we get to control. through and we, we just have this building, we get to control who that then goes to. And I think that's, there, there's a certain value in that as well in knowing and being able to select who, you know, who could then buy, acquire, or, or utilize that space. Um, you know, so it doesn't become a liquor store or, um, you know, any number of things that we might say that doesn't add a value to that area of Main Street or that's a detriment to those around them. So I think we gain, um, you know, valuable control of, um, an essential piece of real estate on Main Street and really get to decide if it isn't best in city hands, then, uh, how does it best suit economic development efforts in our downtown? So I think I would, you know, ask all of you to consider that factor as well in that, you know, we're still hedging our bet of even if, you know, if it weren't, um, to happen the ideal way and, and be part of a, a city hall compound, uh, we, we still gain valuable control. Council Donnelly.
Thank you. Just, just a couple of points. Uh, for a while, I was thinking it was the newest building on Main Street, but I think CVS is. But it's the newest building on that end of Main Street, certainly built to the state codes. Um, the second thing, value, you couldn't build it for five-hundred thousand, so I would say at a million dollars minimum that it would cost to build a building like that. Um, the third thing is, have you ever heard about the neighbor from hell? If you list it, who's going to buy it? Who's going to own it? If you own it, you control it. If we own it, we control it. You're talking about the taxes and the taxes we might lose. What if a nonprofit buys it? You have a number of nonprofits on Main Street, some very valuable buildings that are a liability, not a really an asset. There's no tax revenue from them. And if it was empty, how long would it be empty if we didn't own it? So I certainly support it. There's plans being made by the architectural firm to incorporate it. Uh, it'd be a, a big plus. There's a lot of, a lot of, we're going to be spending millions of dollars to either renovate, maybe move and replace, or however we do city hall. Pittsburgh State's putting in millions of dollars across the street. So if you're talking about ten, twenty, thirty thousand a year for a couple of years, that's small, small change to get a million-dollar building. And to, if anyone talked to any of the people that have, were in the old city hall and moved to the new city hall, you know, some of those place, people had to move again and then we decide to remodel it and they have to move again. And then when it's done, they'll have to move again. Talk to them and see how much they enjoy moving. Thank you.
Council Green.
Um, if we, if we don't accept this building, what would the, um, current market value on this building be?
Uh, we have our assessor here this evening. Would you be able to provide that figure for us?
It's assessed right now at four-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand dollars. Counsel Donnelly is correct, to build a building like that would be significantly more expensive. Um, the thing to keep in mind is, uh, when a building remains vacant for a long time, the, the market value has a tendency to go down. So I think the assessment is a, is a fair starting point to say that the market value's somewhere around four-fifty, four-thirty-five to four-fifty. But, you know, that's as a bank that's occupied. As the property stays vacant for longer and longer, the market value has a tendency to go down.
I guess my question would be, with us owning it, do we have any potential renters that would be willing to rent the space and then in our rental agreement, we would have the first right of refusal on when their lease would end so that we could take over and start the remod on that?
Mr. Mayor?
We'd be capable of answering that. We, we have not, we have not researched that.
And if we move forward on this, we're looking at essentially three years before we could ultimately be in there and operational?
I'm hoping it's more like two.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Council Dina Taylor.
I want to reemphasize this point. First of all, I'm not concerned about the lost tax revenue. I mentioned the lost tax revenue to make a bigger point and I'm going to reinforce it for the people at home and anybody else who wants to listen because I know how this is going to go. There are going to be some individuals who are going to say that we did all of this without doing our homework and without getting the studies done in, in a timely fashion and we just jumped at the chance to get this and that's not the case at all. The actions this council has taken since 2012 have led us to this point. Back to my earlier point, we always, as a council majority, knew we were going back to this area. This is not a surprise to anybody. The studies that are being conducted by this firm have this as an option in every one of those options. The reinforced point I want to make to the residents, if they're concerned about cost, is again, what would the cost be? And I want this answer either when the study's released or however soon the architects can give it to us. I want to know how much would this project cost in twenty nineteen, twenty, twenty if this building were not in any of those options? What would that mean to seven-eighteen? I am assuming, based on common sense, that seven-eighteen would have to be larger, more accommodating, take up more department space, more to renovate, more to demo. It's, it's, it would be substantially more, millions of dollars more, I would assume, based on common sense than if we had this building at no cost, allowing us to do seven-eighteen over in a smaller capacity. So I would like to get that answer at some point before the end of the year because it's a very poignant and important financial piece of information the residents have to have. If we don't do this, what would that project cost? An extra five million? An extra ten million? But I can guarantee you the disparity between the two options is not going to be thirty or forty grand. Because in a million-dollar scope of projects, tens of millions, that is, that is not even a fraction of a percent. So I don't even look at it as a loss to the city. My comment about Pittsburgh State is not that we have to bow down and accommodate them and their needs, it's they are taking a huge step on their end and yes, an investment is a risk. How would it look for the development and revitalization of that side of Main Street if the opposite side were vacant with a building that's crumbling? Not a very good way to market the upper Main Street area. So from a financial standpoint, this makes absolute sense. And that's the only piece of information, whether I have the study now or not, I would like to get, is what is the disparity in cost between not having this building and having the building? What would that new facility cost us? Because now we've got three thousand-plus square feet of space that we don't have to rely on in seven-eighteen. Thank you.
Counselors, a member of the committee, I'll make sure we request that.
Thank you, I would appreciate that.
Council Bean.
Let's make a motion to accept the, uh, approve the mayor's order.
Second.
A motion and second to accept one forty-eight, two thousand seventeen. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, is unanimous. Motion carries.
Thank you, Counselors. Thank you very much.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We adjourn.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.